Welcome everybody into another backtesting session. What we last saw in the last video was Friday, the 4th of March. We saw the NFP coming out with very good numbers, the unemployment rate. And we are now coming into the next weekly week, starting from the 7th of March. So let's have a look at the news. We don't have any USD related report, we have something from China, if they go on. Let's see, on Tuesday, we will have regular precession or reports. Jolt's opening on Wednesday. And then we have the CPI on Thursday, the 10th of March. So the big day will be Thursday, but let's start from Monday. So as you can see over here, 7th of March. We are coming into New York open right now. So so far we have these lows and we have this high that are just being broken. Which would mean of course this possible precession. Okay, so I just start off the session. Okay, we're coming right. Very huge spike after the 8:00 AMmister. Now if I get in the retest of this previous lows, I will probably take the retest for the sales. Also now we are possibly with testing simply to test in this key level for possible continuation. Yeah, and the price is breaking below, we might take the break in retest of this area. For example, enter over there, or breaking again below that. In this case, I think this one, yeah, this one would be a loss. Better can enter over there. Doesn't really make sense, but might be. Okay, so now let's see the next one. So okay, so we are seeing this precession, my previous entry was over here, so no, that's not a loss. This one was not an entry, because it doesn't make sense. The price bouncing from the key level. So what I would want is the price breaking below these lows. Possible continuation sells. Okay, yeah, we had the continuation sells over here. Further retest, simply coming at around 50% of the movement. We could have a possible continuation entry with that. I don't know if that could end up being a win. To be a high risk, I would entry below the key level after seeing the 50% pullback. Or even the safest entry would be this entry as well. Let's see if we have further continuation down below with these lows being retested. Yeah, for example, if I wanted to take this one, this continuation trade would probably be a loss. Yes, so you can see, that would be the correction. Okay, so then the price is back. Let's see if we have a further correction, we'll see this area to be broken down. And there you go. Clean break retest of this area for further win. Oh yeah, after that. Ah, let's see, we have another bounce on this same area. Yeah, anyway, this one would end up being a win. Okay, so yeah, that's very good, three, four wins in a day. And we still have one hour to see. Okay, so. We saw this, we saw the bounce. We took the buys above that. On this level. Now of course I would love to see buys about that. We took this one. Now let's see. If we have a continuation buys. As you can see. With the buys, with the retest of this area. If only prices stays below these previous lows, you might see this precession due to this strong bearish. Over highs. Actually no. So I think we have yet the last 30 minutes of this precession. We have this one, we have these lows. It's okay, now let's see if the price continues above this area. Or we have a full correction below these lows. Okay. We might have a correction below, not very strong bullish precession, price failing to break below the key level. Let's see now if this momentum will push the price up. Yeah, very aggressively, possible retest. Yeah, would end up being the last and final win of the day. And then we saw the full correction, this would be a good entry, of course not. I mean, yeah, it would still be in my time. At the break below these lows. But to be honest, I would probably insert some like for example these lows. Which is the same pattern. Okay, let's go into the 8th of March. On Tuesday, we said that we didn't have any report, so simply by precession wise. Of course during this period, we have also the war in Ukraine that is bringing volatility. It is bringing a lot of, so with the news, you would have to be very, very cautious about it. Because news can bring volatility to each side. So so far, I'm only trying to do it without knowing anything about the news. So let's see if the precession is clear enough. So so far, we really have a lot of volume right before New York, so that New York opens. And let's see now what the precession is telling us. So let's see if we are breaking above here with strong volume. Yes, we already did. Already moving hundreds of pips. Now we might have a correction, but I'm not taking this sell order. Even though yeah, that would be a win. We could probably take this very high risk, I would buy. But after this precession, it cannot really be that high risk, that safe as an entry. Still with this such a huge volatility, it would end up being a win. And that's very good. Let's see if we will have a continuation above the key level. Okay, looks like we don't. Now we are retesting these previous lows. Which could give us possible further buy opportunities. This entry for example, I'm not really sure. Um, we don't know about it, so let's continue from what we see. Yeah, okay, so. Let's see the next one. So okay, we had this precession. That's, I think that's where we took our buys, yes, okay. So we would take this buy, then we'll be looking for buys above there. Okay, so this one was our first win. We will already be in profits, we would probably take this one that we know will be a loss. And it's okay, price is bouncing from the key level. Not taking this buyer, we'll take buys, add a continuation above that. If price has liquidity and gives us further opportunity, I'll probably take this one. I think that would be a loss. Yeah, it was only goes 30 pips, that's a couple of losses in a row. We might have the correction, so take this sell down to the previous lows. Yeah, that would be a loss, so good not to take this such high risk, I would entry on such a bullish barriers. Now if we see the price breaking, retesting above these highs. After this liquidity and volume accumulation, that would be awesome. And we could validate also this one as a possible high risk, I would buy. But yeah, it would be too high risk because it would be before the breakout. So now let's see, we also have this possible strong support that if broken can give us a push below. Okay. New York Stock Exchange opening, now we might have the breakout, yes, and that's a breakout. Unfortunately, no entry unless I really entered with a single candle. Uh, yeah, so that would be quite unlucky. Yeah, unless I really entered at this candle, but that's. I mean, could have been doing live trading, but not backtesting it. Now let's see the continuation, so we saw the strong breakout over there. Okay, we are retesting the possible key level and this previous PSA. A possible continuation buys. Yes. As you can see, it has in this area, which will give us further buys. And okay, above these highs, no entry unfortunately, not a single candle retest. That's because during this probably some very high volatile, high impacting news. And that's bringing fear to the market, so there is really no time to worry, to wait for a single candle retest. So rather not enter over there, which was our trade idea, that's okay. We have this previous highs, there's no real precession that we. Like unless the key level was real area that we could take, okay, yeah, that's the retest. So I will now only take break and retest of these highs again. Now we are creating a support that if broken can bring us down to these lows. Otherwise, I might take this buy, even though now there's a lot of more bearish candles. And we have still failing to break above this top week, I will still probably take this buy. I mean, I take 10 AM candle. And yes, I was hoping that the volume of the new hourly will bring us more liquidity. And that's what is actually happening. Now I will wait for the retest of this area for possible continuation buys. Otherwise, I might expect now coming relating to New York, a correction of this price. So for example, yeah, this one would be a buy and a win. And otherwise, yeah, we're going to see above other buys if we have further opportunities. So there's no real need to sell now until we are clearly seeing a precession confirm. Okay, so let's see now. Wow, strong, strong precession. We were waiting for the retest of this area. Wow, I mean, these are hundreds of pips in a few candles. There's also crazy that a 15 pips stop loss will actually work, for example, over here. That's actually crazy. And yes, so now we will have our buys playing out, especially above this area. And yes, precession confirmed. Now what I would want to take is, I want to see a clear breakout of this area for possible continuation buys. Let's see if we have, yeah, this retest of this week might be okay. Even though with this such a volatility, can get stopped out pretty fast. Still goes to 50 pips. Okay. Further retest, I'm not taking this one, but we can see that we had a further retest of this previous area for continuation buys. We have this retested, which we could take. This one. And yeah, it will go to profits. Very good. So far, we are failing to break this most recent highs. But that's of course what the trade idea will be above that. Otherwise, we might see some slowing down. And possibly even taking some high risk, I would sell below these lows. Yeah, buys, breaking up, every testing it will give us a possible entry. But I think that would be a loss. It's now if we have some safest and sales below this level, yes. As you can see, we have the retest over there, which will be a win. Bounce from here, but still if we break below these lows, I will take a sell. Yeah, I don't know if there was, there wasn't any retest over there. So not really sure about it, about this entry. It was actually a win, it was actually a win. Okay. Very good. Okay, that's great. So let's move to the next one. So we added this one, we see the spike up and it's more 25, 70 pips. Then we have the full correction that we took advantage of, as you can see the sales below there. And yes, now even though it's not trading live, because it's too late, probably buys above this area again. Yeah, will still be profitable, I would say, and enter over there. But yeah, it's not relevant to this, to this precession. Huge volatility, huge range, going to the high, basically the all time high. Now we're coming to the ninth and we are in New York. Open right now, huge bearish, already hundreds of pips of bearish precession coming into New York. We might see as a pullback and then possible continuation below. Okay, price is failing to break above, I will only take buys above there with clear precession. Otherwise, I will take sales below here. Even with this small candle. Yes, that's, that's actually a huge win. And let's see now if we create some infrastructure for possible continuation sells. We have the retest of the key level, which might take high risk, I would entry at. Uh, key level, this would be a loss for the key level. But we might have a continuation, uh, sell. At these bearish candles. Which would, uh, so would be 37 pips and then a correction, so far still live. Yeah, now would be a second loss. Now let's see if we have a now continuation sells or we have to adapt into buys before, especially breaking above this area. Okay, now the price is breaking below these order block lows. Okay, and now we are going down bearish, let's see if we have a retest or it just goes down. We have this retest of these previous lows. Let's see if that would be a win or a loss. Yeah, looks like it's going to be a win, but I will need to check it with the next one. Yeah. So let's. I mean, I will, I will say that it's a win, but I will check it. Uh, where was it? How was this one, yes. So this one, the entry would still be 50 pips, but this will be a win. Remember that the ranges are huge, so. Okay, so now let's continue with the following one. So okay, we took the cells below these lows. Okay, so now what we want to take is sales below the key level. Creating some market structure, safest buys would only be above there. High risk, I would buys would be above this level. Now let's see. Yeah, we have a continuation sells. Possible retest of these lows, retest in the key level actually, and going into profits. But yeah, that's quite too harsh for me, I would say. I would want to see further rotation sells, now we might see the retest of these lows, but yeah, I'm not taking that entry. I want to see possible buys above this area. Which might be a very high risk, I would enter already or at the key level. Strong, very strong rejection. And again, if we break below these lows, we might have continuation sells. So for example, this one would have been a loss. Uh, are we breaking below now these lows? Okay, we are breaking and staying below, which would be by itself a trade idea. Or with this retest. Yeah, which would be a loss. Uh, this retest would be a loss, waiting for the breakout of these lows. This could have been a quick break and retest, which we could take advantage of live. Or that retest over there, which would be a loss. Okay, so now, when do we turn into bulls? We might be to do it above this area. With a new 10 AM candle, let's see if the price breaks and we test these highs, looks like it. We're going to see in the next slide. Okay, so we're talking about this highs. Only sales below these lows. Okay, that we already took the loss, so okay, then we're waiting for this buys. But we might have this high risk, I would entry already, with these smaller candles. Otherwise, probably the price will give us a full retest of this area. Yes, so even if that was an entry, it would still be a loss. On the next set of buys would only be above this area. But yeah, the volume is dying down and not really. Yeah, area was dying down, now after the London close, we had the break and retest of these highs exactly. Which would go into profits, so that would be a very good entry. The only thing is that it was late into the session, but it was very, very great. So now let's move on to the next day. Which was the 10th of March and what did we have on, we have the CPI, CPI on. I mean, we're going to see how they will be, New York session. So far, we have these previous lows and these previous highs. Okay, we're staying below these lows. Possible retest, if I didn't have the CPI coming in five minutes, that would be a perfect entry on the sell side. So but yeah, I have to be very cautious, we'll still take sales below these lows. Uh, was it? That time or was it later? I just give myself a. Ah, okay, so looks like I missed the, uh, the CPI over the app and I think. Okay, otherwise, I, I think that already New York's exchange opening. When did the time change? I thought, yeah, that will change this. This week, so yeah, I don't know, I'm not really sure about it. And yeah, obviously I said 2:30. Okay, let's see, uh, the procession, so as I told you, we already have, only have these sales over there. Okay. Let's see if we have a retest of these lows and yeah, price simply pushing down. This would have been the best high risk I want to entry below the key level. Uh, which will be a winning trade, we don't have any retest of these lows. Only thing we could probably enter over there, but yeah, that's simply inside. And yeah, let's see if it was the next set of sales, for example. Is it might be the retest of the key level for possible continuation sales. Yeah, which will only go like 30 pips and then fail to break below. Okay. Now we're seeing the retracement and I want to see now. Breaking down over there, possible sales, breaking above here for possible buys. This is actually a very nice retest of this area, of these lows. For possible buys, which will be only being rate. Let's see if the perception will not give us, this opportunity will only give us another loss. Uh, over there. And now let's see if we have now. The break below these lows. Or the further trade idea. Okay, so we have this win. And the break and retest anywhere, we can say over here. It's 50 pips, now price might continue selling. Here we didn't take anything because we failed to close strongly above this candle. So there was no further entry after that. Now we want to see retest of these lows. Yes, and you can see, uh, that would be another trade idea winning. Over there. Okay, so let's see now the 10 AM candle. Uh, of this day. Which, okay, so. This one. 10 AM candle, so we are making new lows, we already took some sales, uh, I think we. I don't remember exactly what sales we already took, that was, uh, yeah, was below these lows, I think. Yeah, we took this one at 1995. Okay, yeah, we took this one. Which will go to profit, ah, no, we took this one. Below these lows. Of course, now if we're making, yeah, okay, I'll take possible retest of this area, which is not really happening. So no real entry over there. This might be a very high risk, super high risk I would entry at the key level. After such a strong bullish perception, possibility for buys above this area. Yeah, that's, that's, that's what I said to high risk I would. If we have some entry, especially even this one. The retest of this ice on the left hand side, we might tell this price. Which are actually a loss. And it's okay. Could we have shown buys above this level? Yeah, not really working out yet, yeah, too strong for bearish per section. Now we might have possible cells. Below here. Not yet, now with some more volume and London close, we actually again attempted to retest, breakout every test. And probably yeah, also continue to 45 pips, but that's later into the session, so. No real, uh, no trades to be taken. So now, let's move on to the Friday after this very full week and let's see. So we're coming into the 11th and we said we had. At four, we had the Michigan, so I think even here we are a little bit, um, late to the chart. No, okay, this is actually, uh, the. New York open, so we already had these three ideas. Um, from the next week, of course, we are going to have the, the proper timing. I don't know if we have any sales below there, so far we have these sales, so now let's see the per section. Waiting some market structure. Okay, breaking above, coming into a new four hour candle. Uh, let's see if I, if giving us a possible retest of this area for continuation buys. Uh, is pushing like 40 pips. And now 40 pips, so that would be a win. That's a good thing because it's something that I'm looking at, the retest of this last PSA in not at this one. Which, uh, this one leads to a lot of, uh, losses compared to this actually retest of these previous lows, most recent ones. So that's a very good, uh, thing to see, now of course I would have these trade ideas. Okay. Let's see if we have some retest of these lows. Yeah, always prices simply continue now, where the retest of these previous ones, which we might have entered. For example, this one would have been a win. And if I was mindful, that's what I really want to do, taking this bullish candle entry. And now in the next set of sales will only be below these lows. Uh, below these lows, because I want to avoid the effect of only entering below that. Okay, since we already broken below, we might take, this is a candle close at the level. So that's the risk that I'm talking about, talking about taking an entry over there. But having a loss and seeing the price react to that level, so. Yeah, that's exactly what is happening, that is this one is 30 pips. So even if now it goes to, to a loss, that's the best entry. Yeah, if, uh, it doesn't matter if it goes to a loss, but it is, it gave me the best opportunity because maybe. The price retested exactly these lows and that would still be a win for me. We don't have any, uh, retest of, on the upside, on downside, we might have this. Um, this area being broken, every tested on the upside. Yep, not really too much, as you can see, retesting these last lows, for possible high risk I would buys. As you can see, how these buys. Would have been the good entry. For the topic that I've been just talking about, instead of waiting for this retest, this last recent per section. Now next set is of course above this eyes. Okay, possible entry. Okay. Now let's see if there's enough, yeah, I mean, we have already, we still have another hour and a half. Uh, I even forgot about over here that we have some news, so that's probably why the, I think this one is bad. Yeah, it was bad, that's why we had this bullish push. So we also based on fundamentals, we add some confirmations, still have a hour and a half, so we must still see a lot of volume. Still a lot, see a lot of volume and direction and yeah, we might take this retest. Over here. Let's see, the price is slowing down, my take, entry, over there. Which will be a loss. Would have seen which level, probably, yeah, would have seen each level, but I have this previous ice for possible continuation buys. Yes. Looking at this in this last ice, for possible continuation, you can see also we have a further retest after that. And I don't know if now price will give us this retest. And. Yeah, I don't know if that will end up being a win or a loss, only going to see it in the next one, uh, for the key level. So I'm going to take an entry over there, uh, so this one will be, okay. Okay, so we had, we were talking about the retest of this PSA. So this would have been, uh, an entry where. Any entry over there would probably end up being a loss. Actually, if you see, uh, what I'm talking about, the entry at the key level. This one might still, if I enter over there, might is still profitable, still a win, because this one are higher. Let's see the previous one, yeah, we didn't have any top week above that, so, um. I'm still probably looking towards this entry, but if you look this retest, the retest of this previous here. Will give you 100% of a win, 100%. So. In this case, this entry will still be a win. But it's because, yeah, we're retesting this previous ice on the left hand side. Uh, just to tell you what I mean, is that if we have this per section, we have. This ice. Then we have this per section, is most likely, as will retrace to this ice before them pushing up. Compared to, uh, retesting this previous ice, so this one will be a loss. While this one will be a win. Okay, so let's continue. So now of course our next set of buys would only be. Above this level. Or, um, we might have also next, a nice set of high risk I would sales below there. Okay, yeah, no retest yet, so in this case, I would probably see, if that's not, was not that aggressive. Instead of waiting for the retest of this area, I will probably see a retest of this one. This will reduce the drawdown and probably also reduce the, the loss, uh, loss rate, I would say. For now, after such a strong volume, we might also retest this area. Uh, but yeah, in this case, I will probably take this cell. And you can see, exactly as I was, as I was saying, this one would be a loss. The retest of these lows, so this entry. Will still be, will appear win. Most likely. No, will not be a win, but yeah, it's, it will give you less drawdown, 100%. So now we are having the possible correction, we have this area, I want to see these areas to be broken up. For possible retest. Same thing, we might see the retest over here and price go, or we might see a retest of these previous areas. For continuation up. So as you can see, that's exactly what I'm talking about, this one will be a loss. But this one will be a win. So yeah, that's a good thing that I'm seeing and that's absolutely great. Now we might have a retest of the key level and continuation up. As you can see, it is of the key level, continuation up. Might have this retest of this ice, in this case, there are no other, there's no other per section, that price can't retest. So that's the last, uh, eye, yeah, must be a loss and that's okay, but. That's very good, very good understanding. Still want to be cautious about possible. Sales below. And continue by above this area. Of course, now we are super late actually, yeah. Simply, yeah, this was simply per section, but yeah. Um, that was, this is the big understanding of today. That I'm, something that I'm seeing also in the live, um, live trading. So, uh, hope you guys enjoyed, I think it was also quite a profitable week and I see you next time.